Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Time is now 9:37 AM and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Education meeting of February 12, 2013 is hereby called to order. We do have, we're going to just go through a few of the first items until the other board members that I think, Mertz, you said are real close. But first item would be approval of agenda and order of priority. Do I have a motion?
A new approval, but I'd like to add an agenda item that we consider going into a closed session to discuss pending litigation at approximately 11:15.
Is there a second to that? Cassandra, a second? Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Thank you. And that's, I think you said that, John, but that's for pending litigation with our attorneys general. We hope that'll be around 11:15. I think there's some flexibility on the part of the AGs. Okay. Great. Mertz, if you do the introductions.
I'd like to introduce you to the members of the State Board of Education and those people seated around the table. To my left is the Chairman of the Board and State Superintendent Mike Flanagan. And to his left, as we go around the table, is John Austin, President of the Board. John resides in Ann Arbor. Cassandra Albridge is the Vice President of the Board from Rochester Hills. And next to her is the Board Secretary, Dan Varner. He is very close to the meeting today. And Lupe Ramos Montini is from Grand Rapids. She's a member of the Board. Next to her, also from Grand Rapids, is the Teacher of the Year, Bobby Joe Kenyon. Bobby Joe teaches at Ottawa Hills High School. She's a math and science teacher. Across the table, Greg Tutter represents the Governor's Office. And next to Greg is Eileen Weiser. She's also on her way. Kathleen Strauss is also in the building. Eileen is from Ann Arbor. Kathleen is from Detroit. The Board's NASB delegate is Michelle Fecto. She's here in the red sweater. And she's from Detroit. NASB is the National Association of State Boards of Education. And next to me is Richard Zilee from Dearborn. Oh, I thought you were very much. And he is the Board's Treasurer. Thank you.
Thanks, Mertz. I just, I know I showed this last month, but I want to show this again because it'll help me make an intro into one of the items that I want to bring up. And I think Mike, you know. So for folks who weren't here last month, I'm bragging a little bit. You'll see in a moment.
This is another photo of your brainchild.
It's kind of like that, yes. This is... This is all about stretching out till the rest of the board comes. There's really nothing that's going to come up here.
Can you get up today?
We're bogging.
What a big boy! "Grandma, I thought your head was going to go in there for a minute."
Okay, now, the reason I repeated that is this is our one-year-old grandson, Will, and that was pretty much his first couple of steps. I think he'd actually done that before. The reason I wanted to show it a second time is when Mike, our son Mike, got married to Juden, we also became instant grandparents because Juden had a daughter that we just love, and she's been great. And she's here today to listen on her government class from East Lansing. So I wanted to just introduce that, you've met my son, Mike, there, but this is Alicia, our granddaughter. Wave, hon. Just wave to give her a hand here. She's... So now she's got a baby brother who's one-year-old. And how's that going? And Alicia plays sports there and is an honors student, a lot of AP courses. And I think it's great to have a real student with us today, even if we have a direct relationship. So thanks for coming. And yeah, now you'll see how, I don't know, Joe, I think John said once, how sausage is made. You'll see this today in the way we run a board meeting.
Good government in action.
And really, just, I think adults probably know this, but the State Board is elected statewide. And on average, a State Board member gets about 2 million votes in order to be elected to these positions. And it's not, you know, it's not common. A third of the states, I don't think, have a State Board at all. Another third have a State Board, but it's kind of, it's not elected statewide. So this is really something that's democracy in action. And it's people who are nominated by their parties and then elected to a State Board position for eight years. So, I don't know, Dan, did you know that? Did I have to fill you in on that, or you're up to speed? Okay. So that's part of it, Alicia. And then I did want to say one other thing. I got a call yesterday. This doesn't happen to me much anymore, but I got a call from a headhunter. And why are you laughing? This...
We're just waiting for the next announcement.
Okay. So I got a call from a headhunter, and they asked me to submit my resume. And that hasn't happened in a number of years. And if it's for a position, I would be an alternative candidate for this position. It's a position in Rome, Rome, Italy. They wanted a young Catholic. So, you know, and they said if we can get someone who actually went to Notre Dame, that would help. They're trying to build a football program there. Although, when I got the call, the first thing, they said, "Well, the Cardinals are on the phone." And I thought, finally, you know, after all these years, my childhood dream of becoming a baseball player, they finally figured that it wasn't those Cardinals. Anyway, didn't really happen, so thanks for laughing right out of the lab.
You get a great hat with that.
Yeah, you do.
It's a lot of good hats.
A lot of good hats. So what we're going to, welcome, Eileen. You missed my announcement of getting the call from the Cardinals in Rome to fill in over there for a while. They wanted an alternative candidate, a young Catholic.
Exactly. Makes total sense to me from your admin and humor perspective.
So, as an introduction to our item on the science standards, which is Item A, I thought I'd take a little bit longer this time before I even have our folks come down because I think it's good with the audience we have, but certainly with the board, to just kind of tie it into yesterday's MEEP scores, really. I'm sure you all saw those. This is the earliest they've ever been released publicly. Just a few years ago, that was in April. And I can't, Joseph and the team, it's hard to describe how good a job they do to get this out in this timely fashion. And just a few years ago, not only was the public data released in April, but the data didn't go to the schools till April. And I wanted to just give them a shout-out that now, not only is the public released in early February, as you saw yesterday, but the schools actually get this in December. So teachers can actually start looking at their own data and start trying to inform their instruction for the second semester right away. So I don't see Joseph here, but I know he watches on this. So Sally, you and your team, I just want to give you a hand. I mean, I think it's tremendous. And these are some things that I think people don't realize make a big difference. I mean, think about it, Lupe and others who've been teachers, if you're in a classroom and you're not even getting data till too late in the year to inform your instruction, Bobby Joe certainly gets this, being a practicing teacher now. So that's a big feat. I think it also helps us look good, Greg, on the scoreboard, which kind of looks to reduce those number of days each year. So appreciate that. So first of all, applaud for that. And then also, if you could see from the public release, it's largely good news. We have some challenges still. And I say "we" because I think the team here, we do our best to realize we can't just come up with standards and accountability systems and then just leave teachers on their own. I mean, we've got over 100,000 teachers that work hard every day in these classrooms. So if you look at the progress, this is from a great progress in reading and math over the past four years. And that's even in light of the cut scores. And frankly, I understood why, including us, why we were concerned about what that would mean. But we got past the cut scores, and we got past the kind of the public relations problem, which looked like achievement went down. And it took a while to help people understand, it didn't really go down, we were just adjusting cut scores. Well, now that's behind us, the world didn't end, and progress is being shown, as you know. So while all scores are not where we'd like them to be just yet, we should be very encouraged by the progress. The gains show teachers and students both are really rising to the challenge. I can't thank the board enough for adopting the Common Core standards in 2010. This made a contribution to that, to approving the cut scores in 2011. This is kind of the action that boards take that isn't as, well, it isn't sexy, I guess, but isn't as kind of fun as some of the other headlines that can look like real education reform. But this is real education reform. This is getting things done that helps right at the classroom level. So thank you for both those actions from the board. The good news is, is most student groups have made substantial progress in math and in reading. And reading, their progress has actually also narrowed the achievement gaps. And when you look at that data more closely, it's not only narrowed the achievement gap a bit, but the good news is both sets of scores are going up. So ironically, if that achievement gap, if one of them, if the higher performing had slowed down, it would narrow the achievement gap. But we don't necessarily want that for the sake of just narrowing the gap. So both are going up, and at the same time, we're reducing the gap marginally. And we really have confidence. You can see this when, I know, board members have come to our school improvement conferences and you see the breakout sessions, that these are highly skilled teachers, and they're going to be able to use this and other data to develop strategies and interventions to help all students in all subjects succeed. And this is why, in spite of the Detroit News editorial yesterday, and I admit it was somewhat of a casual remark, I do think teachers are worth $100,000 a year. And I hope we can continue the debate on that. This is very hard work, and it makes the biggest difference in our country, and I hope we can get past the lip service. So I was a little distressed that the editorial thinks it's just pie in the sky. As for the science scores, they went down in both grades, grades five and eight. But one reason I wanted to say this in the intro of our content of our Item A is we expect that with a new focus on accountability for all subjects, which hasn't been in the past, as you know, that schools will work harder on improving those results also. Both science and social studies will be included, as you know, in the new school accountability system. And as we will help describe in a few minutes, we're in the process of asking the board to improve our science standards by starting today and looking at them and then approving them at a later meeting. So we expect to see improved results. That's what's happened right along the line. Clarity about the standards, some time for the public to weigh in, the board approval. And it's not rocket science. You start to see kids and teachers focus on those, and the scores go up. And I think you, this got buried a little bit, I noticed, in some of the articles, but the new, well, I'm sorry, no, it didn't, because we haven't released this yet. But we understand that the new high school graduation rates will show an increase when they're released soon, and that the state's dropout rate continues to go down. So even with the higher standards and the cut scores and the Michigan merit curriculum, which the board adopted in '05, this is a good news story. This just continues to be a good news story. Because remember, a lot of people said, "Watch what's going to happen to the dropout rate because of the Michigan merit curriculum." That the dropout rate's going to be enormous. And it didn't happen. It didn't happen because we have good teachers that you had faith in when you adopted these. So just a few more statistical things. The reading results in 11 and 12, all grades are up. All grades are up from 11 to 12. The four-year trend, all grades are up. The largest gains in grades three and eight, over the past four years, eighth-grade students also showed large gains of 9.3 points. Math results, all grades are up. Four-year trend, five and sixth graders are up. The largest gains in grades four and six with an increase of five and six percentage points respectively. And over the last four years, fifth-grade students showed the largest gains of almost six percentage points. So these are all good news stories, and I think it sets the stage, really, for the presentation that we have, the first item, which is the presentation on the next generation of science standards. Ms. Cal.
I think it's really good that the score, the reading and the math scores have gone up. That's encouraging. I'm really distressed that we somehow or other, we're not doing a good job in social studies. And it seems to me that's such an important area that we really have to concentrate more on it. I keep bringing up civic education every chance I get, but I think we should be thinking more about what we can do to help that situation. I know that the schools are concentrating on the reading and the math.
Well, exactly.
But there's more to education. I mean, they've got to use the reading to read something, the teachers of something about social studies.
Right. And, you know, I think the reason it was a good strategic decision to add science and social studies now to the accountability system was to give time to start to get used to an accountability system that was stronger. But now, by adding those, there will be focus. You know, it's just the nature of our human nature to some degree. And then the clarity we're going to have, and maybe when Sally and the team come down here, in fact, why don't you join us, if you will, Sally and Linda and Greg? You can maybe just speak to the social studies piece for a moment before we get into science. Alicia, while we're at a lull, what science course are you taking right now? AP? AP Environmental Science. How's that going? You enjoying it?
Yeah.
For those who came late, that's our granddaughter, Alicia. We were fortunate, through Mike's marriage, to have an instant granddaughter who we love as of a few years ago. And she's just, she's a high school student in East Lansing and makes us very proud. Yes, Linda, please.
Mike, you asked about social studies. There's a question about that.
With Kathy's point, yeah.
Yes. And we are bringing you science today, but you will see in the months ahead that we're bringing you a new set of, a new framework for social studies because that's also under development and consideration. And if we marry that and the new thinking there to now the requirement for accountability with social studies and science, I think you'll see this trend begin to trend upwards. So we're working actively with the social studies community right now on that component that's coming. We're not ready to bring it to you yet.
Yeah, but I think we're going to have to help schools do a better job of teaching social studies. I don't know. More than just, it's good that we're going to do the task, but I think we have to come up with some suggestions or something to...
I think the new, I won't call them standards, it's a framework. I think the new framework will allow us to refocus and rethink and recalibrate with the teachers.
Oh, good. Thank you.
You know, remember even back to the clarity the board brought to course content expectations a number of years ago. Because I think what was happening with No Malice is without that clarity, you were not necessarily having third-grade teachers what should be, in that case, grade-level content expectations, teaching what should be taught in third grade to get ready for fourth grade. And then particularly, if you added children that, because of the high mobility in this state, move from school district to school district, you're just behind before you start. So I can't overemphasize the importance of that clarity over these years and more to come. You know, then people want to do the right job, and they're just sometimes not clear on how it fits into the big system of... Richard.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, the field of social studies is much more diverse, both in terms of philosophy and whether skills can be emphasized over content or not. And when you get into civics, then you've got some normative or values that the profession is not unified in their perspective. So I think that there's a special challenge in coming up with standards for social studies that just aren't as great for English and math and even science. So there's some special circumstances why we haven't come as far as coming up with a unified testing curriculum for this field.
That could be, but we still, people have to know their history.
I agree.
And, you know, it's so important that you can see that people are not well-informed. So we really have to do a better job.
John, please.
I don't want to continue the commentary, but briefly, I think this is very encouraging result. And as Mike said, it does show the power of clear, high expectations and the chance for educators to organize around them and align and learn how to teach them and without as much help as I hope we can give them. But it does show the power of staying the course with good, high standards. And it's particularly encouraging about the dropout rates because, as we saw in Massachusetts and other states, everybody predicted more dropouts with high rigorous expectations. And if we can show that we're helping more kids succeed, you know, that is so powerful.
And before I, so I don't disrupt this in the middle, I lost track when I was telling my Cardinal story and, you know, all that, that we actually have, I went and got some things this morning that we're going to pass around the audience and a tray also for the board. You know that famous tradition of today on Fat Tuesday. So take them till they run out. But one's going to come up here at the board table, and then I think Karen's bringing some for the audience. Pusky Day. I didn't know that until I came to the Detroit area 30 years ago. Never heard of the tradition. And we cut them in pieces because then it's only about 50 grams of fat for every little piece.
100 calories.
Right.
This reminds me of Dan Manthi. Now, nobody knows Dan Manthi anymore. He used to always bring, he was a lobbyist.
It's Karen in the back.
They used to feed on him, I don't know what they did. They met on Tuesday. He put it up for everything. He was a lobbyist, committee man.
So without disruption, yeah?
I grew up in Detroit, and then I went to college and went, you know, had four kids in other states. Then we came back about 30 years ago and then discovered Puskeys, which we'd never had when I was growing up.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That was a relatively new?
Yeah. Somewhere between '77 and '87, you know, somebody started marketing Puskeys.
Well, they've done a good job. I think it's the biggest... So there's probably science... Oh, you're welcome. There's probably science in the composition of these somehow. I don't know that we could work into the...
Baking. Baking's always a science in getting the right components together. So we're here this morning to give you the first look at the next generation of science standards. Michigan has been one of 25 states that's been serving in a lead capacity in the development and the adoption of these standards. So we're very excited to see these. I think some of you who have been expressing an interest in STEM will see that this will support STEM initiatives and the focus on that. These are really based on the National Research Council's framework for K-12 science education. And in the same way with the math and the science, this is something that we probably, as a state, would not have been able to afford to do, is to bring the level of expertise that they have been able to bring together to develop these. So we're not going to go in detail over the standards, but want to give you an overview. We'll bring the final standards. The final standards will be done in March. We'll bring those in April to ask your approval to put them out for one more time of public comment. So with that, turn it over to Linda.
Thank you. We're really excited about this initiative. It complements the work that we've been doing with the Common Core State Standards in English, Language Arts, and Math, and leads us to a rewrite and a redo of science. And as you know, curriculum is a cyclical sort of thing that you need to go back and revisit periodically, and so it was time to take a look at the science standards as well. Sally alluded to the fact that this brings together a lot of partners and a lot of work, things that we would not have been able to do individually as a state to have as much expertise around the table as we do through this process. It is based on the Framework for Science, K-12 Science Education, but I especially want to call your attention to some of the partners that are working with us around the state. The Michigan Science Teachers Association and the Michigan Mathematic and Science Centers Network are clearly a part of this work, and we reach out to them regularly. Also, the Michigan STEM Partnership is a force that we need at the table because we recognize that STEM's going to play an important role in this next set of science standards. If you look at the benchmarks that were put together in the '90s for science education and you couple that with some of the work that was done by the National Science Foundation, those pieces were what led to the development of the framework for K-12 science education. And this forms the base for what is rolling out as the new standards. That work was done in 2010 and '11. And then from that, we've rolled forward in July of 2011 until now, the next generation of science standards. It's being done by several states, and as Sally pointed out, we're one of the lead states on that project. Greg Dion, who is the supervisor for our Curriculum and Instruction Unit, is going to go into more detail for you.
In terms of the dimensions and how the standards are actually set up at this point, these are draft standards, so we're working from the latest draft. There's three dimensions that are intertwined together. The practices, which are the skills, the core ideas, which is where the content is contained, and then these cross-cutting concepts that build on prior knowledge with the students. As with the other standards, such as the Common Core, these are performance expectations. These will also require contextual application of all three dimensions by students. In terms of the focus, the conceptual focus, first is that K-12 science education should reflect this interconnected nature of science. It's practiced and experienced in the real world, so creating that relevance. Again, these are performance expectations, not to be confused with the curriculum that would take place at the local level. They also build coherently from grades K through 12, and they focus on a deeper understanding of the content and the application of that content. The engineering and science practices are integrated from grades K through 12 in these drafts, and they're also aligned with the Common Core State Standards for English, Language Arts, and Mathematics.
Would you comment on the relationship between the performance expectations and
The performance expectations are simply set of framework that schools can utilize in order to build the curriculum that they see fit to have in their local district. And so it's a framework, they can pick among the standards. We certainly let them know where we're going to be assessing. But it is a framework for them, and they build what they want to have taught in the classrooms. That's done locally, and we don't touch that part.
And are there aspects of the curriculum, of the science curriculum, that are not addressed by these standards?
There certainly could be. A school district could choose that they want to teach something that is not in the standards, and they can choose to do that. So it's totally a local district decision at that point.
And this is a screenshot of the website. The standards are currently not available. They've been taken down, and they're actually in review by states. As Sally mentioned, March 30 is the target date for release of the actual standards. In terms of supporting documents, they've organized them around these appendices, and these are actually currently available on that site. So these can be viewed now from the website. But this is where the supporting documentation for the actual standards will be housed, and this is, again, based on the current draft standards that are available. In terms of career and college readiness, the evidence of students being able to demonstrate that they're career and college-ready are self-directed planning, monitoring, and evaluating by the student, being able to apply knowledge flexibly across various disciplines within the sciences, being able to employ valid and reliable research strategies, and exhibiting evidence of effective transfer of mathematics and disciplinary literacy skills to science. This is just a map of the 26 lead states... skills to science. This is just a map of the 26 lead states. Their, the lead states have provided feedback to achieve and obviously the public reviews were opened up, so anybody could access those also, but this is just a map of those lead states. And then here is a development timeline for the standards and this is just kind of some benchmarks that we provided. The first public draft occurred in May. The final draft window just closed in February and we would be looking to seek approval of public comment in April of 2013 and then approval of the standards in May of 2013. The feedback that we've received from the surveys so far has actually been very positive on the standards. In terms of transitioning, we know this is going to be a process, so we'll be looking to collaborate with our stakeholders. Those are listed here and Linda had mentioned some of them, but we'd be considering rollouts of the actual standards themselves. What kind of professional development would be necessary to go along with the rollouts and implementation, providing support and technical assistance with our partners and then also assessment development and we'd be working with the Bureau of Assessment Accountability on that component. At this point, when we look out to a full implementation plan, excuse me, we're looking at a three to four-year full transition to the standards themselves. These are the two most informational websites, the official Next Generation Science Standards site and also the Michigan and GSS page shortcut.
Okay. Mike?
Thanks, Sally. Board members, comments, questions? Eileen?
Well, I found myself immersed in STEM recently as the resident musician on the board. I always marvel at going to the dark side, but that's where I find myself. I'm very grateful that we led, that we helped lead this initiative and I'm very excited about it. I'm on the Michigan Science Center board and I think I've said this before that there are only two museums right now in the country that have committed to trying to implement the concepts behind Next Generation Science Standards in their exhibits. And the hardest part, as I've wandered around listening to all of the educators and the STEM people who are concerned about how we're going to get there, that the hardest part of this is that it's dynamic. Teaching science is not going to be static at all anymore. Not science, all STEM areas. The cross-cutting concepts are, we do have teachers who are gifted and who are able to teach that way and pull in different aspects of technology, science, engineering and math together, whatever subject they're teaching, but it's rare. And it's going to take a transformation in behavior and thinking that I'm not quite sure how we're going to bridge. I've been working with our staff and with the Michigan Math and Science Centers and a number of educators in the state to, to put together thoughts about how we would make sure that everybody is on board and it's certainly something that the people who have to do it are working on very hard, but it's not going to be easy and I'm not quite sure how we're going to get there.
Thank you. Other board members? I know it's coming back, you know, and we'll have a chance. I visited the, the Math and Science Center in Battle Creek last week. It's just, it's very much what Eileen just described. You know, you wouldn't think of it as science in the sense that robots are everywhere and kids are active and co-teaching, one teacher with a scientist from Kellogg. It was very exciting and would commend to you that any, we can help facilitate any chance that you might want to visit some of those same centers. Michelle?
In the rollout and in the, and looking at implementation, it's my understanding that we're short of science teachers. Is that, is that there's a need to recruit more and to have more science people who are certified in that and able to do this? And is that somehow part of, and is planning to figure out how to actually find people to implement this that are properly trained?
Mike took a stab at that the other day with his announcement with the science folks that we have to have, not only do we have to have highly qualified people, but we have to have incentives to want to bring them into the practice. So that's one piece of it. We will be reaching out to, through the networks and through higher education institutions. We have already a partnership at MSU on, on this rollout and we will be reaching out to them to explore other ways to bring others into the profession as we move forward.
And Sally, do you want to mention, this is coming to the board, I think, in the spring, but some of the issues related to the redesigning the point system for higher ed and how that might reward those that are helping us with supply and demand. I mean, we'll have a more formal, we don't have it invented fully yet, but that's due to come, I think, in the spring to you.
Right. The, if you remember, we do a performance score for the institutes of higher ed for the colleges of education and one of the areas that we've included in there has been, to the extent to which they're giving us, meeting the shortage needs. We haven't really put a lot of weight on that, so we're looking at how to shift more weight into those areas of shortage so that it gets a little bit more, it gets more attention by the, by the colleges of education.
And then the board will have a chance to weigh in on that when we bring them, because you know, there's some unique experiences here at the table on that very matter that might help us shape it. So we're going to take our best shot as we always do and then, and then ask for some of the board's thoughts and then bring it back a month later. But I think that's how you get at some of this. The Western Michigan president brought his team in a couple of weeks ago and, because they're, I don't think he'd mind me saying this, it was public information when we presented it, but they're an at-risk program. But I'm convinced that they, it's interesting that they volunteer, that they want to be the ones that are taking care of the supply problem. They want to focus on that. They want to get the math and science and it's not just those two. It's special, special education, world language. But I think that was very inspiring for me to hear the president taking the time, first of all, and then describing how they saw this as their mission. Kath, please.
I wanted to ask about the implementation too. If this is going to take three to four, four, three, four years, how is that going to be based in what start, what goes first and what comes in the fourth year?
We don't have that laid out as yet. We're waiting to see what the, what the actual standards completed look like. But we've begun to work with rolling out the first pieces as we did with the Common Core. What are the, what is the awareness? What's new about this? What is different? And the same thing applies to this as it did with the Common Core. It's a change in practice of teaching. It's a change in rigor and level of expectation from the students. And so helping teachers to understand what's expected and how, how that change is going to be our first initiative. Then we will continue to work with MAISA and the intermediate school districts to help develop model curricula. They'll take care of that work. They have people trained to do that and so we'll let them deal with that while we work on instructional practice here within our staff.
Okay, thank you. Now, the other thing, are we doing anything, in elementary schools, most elementary schools have a teacher in the classroom who teaches everything. Are we going to be doing anything to do more training of teachers, how to teach the science part of their, because this starts in kindergarten and covers everything. I mean, it covers everything connected with science. It's, it's really broad and it's got everything in it. So they're going to need a lot of help.
We're going to, we're working on those instructional practices and Greg's team is, is already geared up and they're excited to be able to, to focus in on instructional practice and that it's a massive professional development campaign. We're going to have to work, just as we have with, excuse me, the Common Core State Standards with other organizations to help us accomplish that task. It will not be able to flow directly from MDE. It'll be a partnership, if you will.
Thanks.
Bobby, Joe, did you have, yes?
Yes. As a science teacher, this is really exciting to me and one of the biggest changes that I saw is the application and the rigor is definitely there and it will be a change in mindset to a lot of new teachers. And I'm, I'm on the Kent Science Team where we started to look at some of these and, and from what I've seen and talked to a lot of other schools, they're really jumping in board and trying to get done early and trying to implement as we go. One question I hear a lot from teachers, is there, is there going to be a curriculum resource available where teachers can share lessons that model this and upload them and share as resource? Because I know a lot of teachers just want to see some good ideas and practices.
I would say yes. We've kind of gone that direction with the Common Core. We have our Career in College Ready portal. We also have a lot of resources on the MORE portal and I think one of the advantages of being part of these state consortiums is that we can also take advantage of the resources that other states and other organizations are developing. So I think the answer would be yes.
Good question. Thank you. Eileen?
I had a couple of follow-up comments. It's hard to make this sort of a battleship realignment. It's a complicated thing to try and swing the ship around. But I wanted to point out a few reasons why it's so important for this state now, besides obviously the basis of our economy. The, I was talking to someone recently at U of M who's in charge of helping the nearly half of U of M science majors who can't express themselves well enough in language to be able to graduate without remediation. And those are the kids who are accepted. So the Next Generation Science Standards are integrated with our English Language Arts, which is really important. Kathleen was talking about trying to teach literacy across the curriculum and this is a huge step toward that. And I had an interesting conversation with someone in the field. Again, remember, we're trying to educate kids so that when they get out, they not have not just interesting lives, but good jobs. And he pointed out that until Einstein, we were pretty much expressing science concepts through science. Newton watched an apple fall and came up with the concept of gravity. Einstein though, did energy equals mc squared, matter times constant squared, which was a mathematical equation, and then handed it off to the physicists to prove. And if you recall, we just discovered the, is it Boson-Higgs particle, which was a mathematical equation. And we finally were able to do the science experimentations to prove it and then hopefully find out how to use it. And the last thing is that I talked to an engineer who's an inventor and he said that he finds now, he's a materials engineer and he finds now that his materials come to him through chemical equations as much as they do something that you can hold. So we have to make this shift and I admire our teachers for the courage that they have in science and I think that they're going to enjoy it in 10 years. I just think it's going to be tough getting there.
Pretty good for a musician.
I just want to say thank you to the staff and for your hard work on this. I mean, this is among the unheralded, but sort of meat and potatoes work of the board, but it's the department and you all that do all the real work to make sure we are aligning our expectations in content areas with the best thinking and practice nationally and continually bringing that into view so that educators can go to work in teaching it. And so I just want to say thank you.
Thanks, John. Thank you. Richard, please.
I have to say, I have some developmental concern. I'm looking at standards for fourth grade, structured function, information processing, construct models to describe that animal senses receive different types of information from their environment, process the information in the brain, respond to the information in different ways, clarification statement examples. The models could be diagrams or analogies. A lot of fourth graders haven't reached the developmental state where analogies are meaningful. And I would suggest maybe have someone who's got expertise in developmental stages here to maybe assess some of, some of these things. Some of you may recall the New Math, which is ancient history now, and one of the reasons why New Math failed is was an attempt to teach the theory and in many cases, we tried to teach it to children who are not developmentally ready for the theory. And that is the concern that I, that I would have with, with these standards. Are we attempting to teach too much early on before children are ready? I guess the traditional approach has been you give children a variety of experiences, develop their vocabulary and then when they are, have reached a certain level with math development and better abstraction skills, then they can, then you can introduce them to scientific concepts or in theory to this extent. So that's the, the concern I have in looking over the standards for the younger, younger grades.
That's interesting. Any thoughts?
Our, our staff works routinely with the early childhood group because they cover up through age 12 and especially through, through third grade. I don't know right now if this has been done yet with this group, but it's certainly something we can do. They can give us some guidance on the developmental appropriateness.
Let's do that. That's a good observation. Thank you. Okay. Well, thank you. This is coming back. Greg, remind me again?
We'd be looking to take out for public comment in April would be the request.
And come back to the board?
In May.
In May. Okay. So we look forward to that and thanks. Great, great start. Not great start, great start. Great. Our second item is presentation on public school academy authorizer performance metrics and this was a request of the board that the staff's worked hard on. There's been some university work and it's, this is, the focus was authorizers. And I think joining us today is going to be Sally and Linda who are already here and Joseph, I think, along with Mark are joining us at the table. And interesting, interesting things. John?
I just want to say a little bit more briefly about why we were so pleased and thank you for your work in bringing this forward. And the point of this, and it'd be great to discuss it as we will, was, you know, as, as we expand and have expanded new choices, new chargers and new school provision, online learning, and as we are considering in the state additional choice, expansion potentially, one thing that we wanted to be very clear about is, and as we try to do our job, providing the standards and guidance and support for schools, just as every school board is responsible for the performance of its local schools in its portfolio, we wanted to shine a light on and, and remind ourselves that the authorizer, whether it's community college, university or school district or ISD, they're the public body, they're the school board that is responsible for the quality and performance of their portfolio of schools. And we wanted to look at them using the same metrics, the same performance rankings as all schools, not doing anything different. And, and really shine a light on the performance of charters and other schools by authorizer, just as we do by school board and school district, and applaud those publicly that are, are doing a great job at ensuring high performance and improving performance schools and to encourage a better performance from those that are not. So I just wanted to set that up in terms of why we wanted to bring this forward and as Mike said, to look at the performance by authorizer as the, the public body that is responsible for the performance of their school.
Thank you, John. That's a good intro. And there is some variation as you see in this, so it's, it's a good exercise. By the way, when I see Joseph up here, I, since you weren't here before, I, I did compliment your whole team on the, on how well you're doing in terms of getting the MEAP results out at this early date. But the other thing is you're good on TV. Last night on TV, radio on the way home and Marty, you know, always kind of masterminds some of this stuff, but I thought it, great job on the MEAP and it really served the department well. So appreciate it. Sally?
Okay. So what you have in your packet is, is really two different reports. One that we worked on with our partners at MSU. The board has been asking and raising some questions about the authorizers, so we had already initiated some work with them to come up with some data for you. And then the second one is, was it some data that we put together here at the department that really takes a look at the focus, the priority and the rewards schools for the authorizers as well. So I'm going to turn it over first to Linda. Thank you, Sally. Just, I'm going to do a little bit of the setup on this and then turn it over to Mark who has been very close to all of the work. So this is, as Sally said, a two-part review and the first conversation is around Attachment A, which is the work that was done by MSU's Policy Center and uses the top to bottom ranking methodology that's utilized by Joseph Schop as we put together that list. We're going to focus on student academic performance by the 11 largest authorizing agencies. And we did that because as you get on down through the authorizers, you get into authorizers that only are working with one or two public school academies. And so we looked at those that had three or more public school academies for this report. Beyond that, it's down to singletons and doubletons. singletons and doubletons. It includes the Michigan Educational Assessment Program data from 2011 and the merit exam from 2012. We used only full academic year students, so that where you've got students moving in and out, those were not considered. The ranking is based on several points: student achievement, student growth over time, authorizer improvement over time, and achievement gaps across all five tested areas. Remember, Mike talked earlier today that we're moving to accountability in all of the tested areas. So they all were considered, as well as graduation rate for authorizers with graduating students. And remember, some of the authorizers do not authorize schools at the eight or the 912 level. So some of them would not take a look at that. We also utilized weighted averages, and I should tell you, we worked closely, the MSU folks worked closely with staff and Joseph Schop to make sure that we had aligned our thinking and that we were not comparing apples and oranges. We're trying to bring this into a unified approach to this. And Mark's going to go over at some of the results with you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The data that we're showing on the slides is all data that we've taken from the report. It may look a little different, so if there's something in the, in the presentation that doesn't look exactly the way it does in the report, I'd be happy to entertain that. But all the data comes from essentially the report, either as bits and pieces that we extracted out, or as a, we put it into a chart to make it easier to look at. The first slide is a ranking of the authorizer portfolios. The legend shows, you see the zero line, which is effectively in the middle. That's the average. And here, the authorizers are compared to each other. So the authorizers on the right-hand side of the chart had above-average performance, and those on the left side of the chart had below-average performance. We showed this, this chart is actually part of a greater chart that's in the report. But I wanted to show this and break it out just by race, and bring it to your attention that if you look at the second or third line there, where it says "all authorizers," you 'll notice that we had 53% of the students that were tested were black students. So three times as many students by percentage in charter schools tested as were across And disadvantaged, economically disadvantaged, here, again, we just broke it out to show that 20% more economically disadvantaged students were tested in charter schools as opposed to the state average. Limited English proficiency, just a little bit difference there in terms of a percentage, just a slight increase over what the state average is. And with special education, a slight decrease. It's not a surprise that public school academies tested a smaller percentage of students with disabilities than the state average. And we have a recent GAO report from earlier this year that says nationwide charter schools test 3% less special education, or students eligible for special education services than the traditional public schools. In Michigan, you'll see the percentage is 2%. We wanted to illustrate the numbers that we're talking about. You'll see on the left, Central Michigan University had their portfolio of 26,000 students, ranking all the way down to Wayne Reso that has less than 1,000. Okay. This chart, or this language comes right from the chart on Table 8, it's actually Table 8, from page A9. It looks at black student performance. Noteworthy here that, that students from Lake Superior State University's portfolio ranked among the top in nine out of 10 subject areas tested. As a matter of fact, in the 10 subject areas tested, students from that portfolio exceeded the state average in every single one. For economically disadvantaged, Lake Superior ranked, again, among the top three in eight out of 10 subject areas for economically disadvantaged students from their portfolio. And again, students from Lake Superior State authorized schools exceeded the state average nine out of 10 times. This is the second part of the review, and this speaks to the reward focus and priority lists. And we took all of the schools here. In the first part of this review, we only looked at the top 11. This attachment, in this portion of the report, we looked at all of the schools. And so there's 2,866 public schools reviewed and ranked, 219 were PSAs, PSA schools. Priority lists, 146 schools, nine of them are PSAs. The four come from DPS. The one that CMU has within its portfolio has already been notified that it's CMU's intent not to renew their charter.
And those are the underperformers, right?
Yes, sir.
Used to be the persistently lowest, or the 5%.
Right.
Good reminder.
Focus schools, this is where the achievement gap existed between the top and bottom 30%, just as a form of review. 23 PSA schools on the focus list. If you consider that all of our authorizers as a function of how many schools they authorize and percentages ought to be equally represented across the full spectrum, you could say that Bayton Hills is overrepresented in this group and CMU is underrepresented.
I'm getting mixed up myself. Which way means?
Well, go ahead. The focus school list is generally, that's where you have the gap.
I mean, by what, underrepresented?
Pardon me?
What is over and underrepresented?
Oh, I'm sorry. If it's overrepresented, it means that there's more schools on the list than you'd expect based on their percentage. And underrepresented means you'd expect more schools to be on the list than are.
Okay, thank you.
Reward list, 19 PSA schools on the reward list. Eight are authorized by CMU, five by Bayton Hills. Based on the percentages, CMU is overrepresented, Grand Valley is underrepresented on the reward list. We added the enrollment variable because as we were going through and looking at the data, we found something very interesting. We found that the average size of a PSA school on the priority list is half the size of the traditional public school on the same list, in terms of enrollment. We thought that was interesting. Focus list, schools about the same size, and reward school lists a slight variation.
Okay, so that's a summary of the two reports. Mike?
Support, comments, or questions of the folks here? And Eileen, yes?
The one thing that I missed in this incredibly thorough report was the number of authorizing, or number of schools by authorizer. I've been through this a couple times. I keep on looking for it, and I'm, in other words, each authorizer has how many schools, and then how many schools were in the report, because I understand that 20% of them couldn't be included because they were too small or they hadn't been in business long enough.
We can get that information for you. We did not include it.
Well, the only-
It's in the last chart.
It is in the last.
Priority focus reward, the last couple pages.
All right.
Does the school count, up school by authorizer, subject to the way, last?
Tasked page number?
It's in this chart.
Okay.
It's in this column here.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
So then, I had a series of questions, because it's a great study. And the, because of the high number of African-American and Hispanic kids in the, in the PSAs, I wanted to probe that a little bit. This morning, the Great Lakes Center for Education, Research and Practice sent out an email saying that the Credo study actually was a good study. So I'm, I would, and I now understand why the charter people wanted to substitute the NWEA assessment for growth for the MEEP a year or so ago. I now understand that discussion because obviously that was the base for the, the growth measurement in the Credo study is a substantially different snapshot than we can take of these children. So because there's, as we try to figure out what authorizers could do better or different, and particularly, I would say, in light of emergency manager situations where we're bringing in authorizers, I'm wondering if there's any way to go back to the Credo data and see if there are schools that are on our focus or priority list, or, you know, sort of in between, and see exactly what's happening to those children in the way of growth. There's, in the Credo study, there's an interesting chart on how long children have been in charter schools and how much better they achieve after they've been in for several years. So there's a, if there, if there are way to even do two schools within each of these categories, or three, just to see what growth looks like for children who are poor or of color, and see whether even though their test scores are extremely low, they're experiencing growth. The reason that I say that, obviously, is we're hoping to replicate things that work, and we're also hoping to not reproduce things that don't work. So delving into this, it's a unique opportunity, because before this, we just couldn't look at growth for anybody. And Mike, a number of times, we've had the conversation on the board, not just about charter schools, but traditional schools where growth is taking place, who show up very badly. And the question is, how are we going to get to that? So I don't see anybody appropriating more funds for NWEA testing. It's something that districts are going to have to do on their own. But if there's answers in the Credo study, I would hate to ignore them. With the very high quality of this study, I'd love to get them matched, if it's possible. Thanks.
Joseph, and then John.
Just to hit the mic.
Sorry.
Just a clarifying question, just a clarifying statement. The Credo study actually did follow students' MEEP scores from year to year. So it actually wasn't on NWEA. They actually got the data from us to study the MEEP, and they were able to measure students' progress on the MEEP from year to year, and that's where they saw the differences. So we do have the ability to follow them from year to year on that. And the question about whether or not we can follow some individual schools, we could certainly look at some of the schools that we saw in the Credo study, looking at what is being done with. We, in the Credo study, they did look at some of the demographics as well. I don't have them at the tip of my tongue, but we can, I have the, I have the report in front of me. But the, the issue is that there were, these two studies really do coincide. We do see slightly more growth happening, both in this study that was done by MSU, for, for students who are attending the charter schools as compared to traditional Publix, as well as in the Credo study. So we do see them coinciding with a slight additional amount of students that are making significant progress from year to year.
Please, John.
So not to pick on PSAs for a moment, but that means also that we could be seeing data for our schools that are beating the odds, that there may be some, you know, clearly we give a lot of information about the beating the odds schools. But is there any way in all of this to help people know what truly is better for kids beyond what we're telling them already? I think, and I think the other issue is that it looks to me as if the authorizers, all of the authorizers, most of them, have good schools and bad schools. So, you know, I don't know how this can inform them to do anything differently than what they're doing. I don't know what the mechanisms are for assessment, actually reaching practice and priorities and policies.
Yeah, so, yes, we can do the studies outside just charter schools, and it is correct that we saw some good and some not so good in the charters, just as we see with the Publix, the traditional Publix. What we saw was overall a slight advantage with the charter schools. We can do the same kind of study, and we have actually started working with some partners to look at, to look at our schools that are beating the odds. What are they doing, doing a more rigorous set of studies? Like, what we do when we identify the schools beating the odds is we, we send them an interview protocol, we get responses back, and they tell us what they think is causing them to be beating the odds. We're looking at, working with some of our research partners to do a much more rigorous, not a self-report study on what you think is causing this to happen, but what are the practices that you actually see in these schools that are beating the odds that might be leading to them seeing improved scores, improved growth over time. So we will, we will conduct that study. It will take some time because of trying to do this in a much more rigorous manner than just through self-report interviews.
Last follow-on. If there were a way to prioritize it and to accelerate it for situations in which we have emergency management responsibility, it would make total sense to me, because we're struggling with recruiting authorizers for districts when we enter that situation. And I know all of us are extremely sensitive to looking at demographics and saying, but wait, is that authorizer going to do a good job with that pool of children? So focusing on kids at risk and poverty and of color makes complete sense to me. And I'm delighted that you're already ahead of that, and I hope it happens tomorrow. Thanks.
Thank you.
John, and then Cassandra. And we can think about priorities there. Maybe we should talk about that in the debrief today.
And thanks for this analysis very, very much. And I'm sure all board members have questions and observations. Let me make a couple quickly that jump out to me. One, per the point of doing this, it, since we don't have a strong or a lot of state quality control mandates or abilities on charters, it is very helpful to note where authorizers, whether it's Lake Superior State or Grand Valley State, are succeeding in managing a set of schools that are disproportionately working well for African-American students and working well for their students, and, and obviously the reverse of that, where others are not. But I think two other observations quickly. You know, there was, there was concern when charters were first proposed, that they would cream better-off students. And if anything, the fact that charters grow, there is a market, and serve disproportionate numbers of African-American and poor kids, shows that's where the market is for new choices, and that's where charters have been developed, and likelihood that folks are looking for a different choice in disproportionately poor or urban and/or heavier African-American populations. I do want to note, though, it is, I do think the 2% number of below special education service and the 3% number nationally does perhaps still reflect this subtle tacit implicit screening of not being available to special needs children at the same ratio, which is of serious concern, because it is, it's not then helpful to create schools that aren't available to in equal ratios of the kids with special needs. And then that leaves a heavier burden on the traditional schools. And I would note, we're probably not alone in that, obviously nationally, if those numbers are true. But it is a source, I know from Michelle and others who are passionate about this, a source of continued purpose for us to try to figure out how we can do better than that in all that we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Cassandra, please.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for pulling this together. I think this is very helpful, and I'm looking forward to the board conversation after this about what the next steps might be and how we use this information. But I had a quick question, and I'm sure it's just, I'm not getting it. But can you explain to me on, say, for example, page A4, Table 3, what the percentages mean, because they don't add up to 100%. So I'm a little confused on how these percentages came about.
What page is that?
Page A4, attachment A, Table 3.
Okay. I couldn't print it out. I don't have it. Might be on there.
Yeah, if you look, if you look at the first column, that just tells you how many were being tested in each of these buckets. in each of these buckets or by each of these authorizers. The percent proficient tells you what percentage of the students were proficient on the test. The percent improving tells you how many students made, made progress toward proficiency or beyond proficiency. And the not, the not or partially proficient but improving are the students who weren't proficient but made progress toward proficiency. Kind of our, this is the ones that we're the most concerned about. We want these students to be moving forward. So, and then you have the not partially proficient that moved to proficient or advanced. These are the ones who actually were not proficient before and moved into proficiency. So these are not mutually exclusive columns, so you would not expect them to add up to 100%. They represent very different things.
But they represent individuals, correct?
They represent individuals, the percentage of individual students that fall into each of those four categories.
So a student could fall into more than one category?
Right. So for example, a student could be proficient as well as improving, so they might fall into both of those columns.
And explain to me how that, how that would happen, how you can be two at the same time?
So you might be a proficient student, but you would also be making progress beyond proficiency. You might be moving toward advanced, or you might be moving into advanced. So you could be proficient as well as improving beyond proficiency.
Okay. So it's where you are plus where you're growing?
Yes.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Good question. Other board members? Kathleen, please. And then Dan.
Do you think the fact that the PSAs were half the size of the traditional school had some bearing on the results? We don't know. We don't know.
The data's not sufficient to look, to identify or to know that. It could be a multitude of reasons. Maybe parents identified it as a poor performing school and spoke with their feet. It could be any number of reasons.
Because I, you know, I've, I've gone, you know, on one day sometimes, I've gone from a suburban school that has maybe 350 kids in it. They're not charters, they're all public schools. And then go to a Detroit school, the same grade level, and they have 1,000 kids in it. And the small school that, you know, looks, just looks, does much better. Now, that could be a lot of different reasons, not just the size. But I wonder that, I know that, you know, we talk about 500 even a good size for a high school. I mean, there's been a lot of research that said that. Now, whether, they still say that, that was last year in the U of U. So they may have changed their minds. But I've wondered about that. So that doesn't, we don't have enough data to really...
Yeah. That's not, that's an observation. It's not a causal.
Okay. Because in Detroit, they were still building new schools for 1,000 elementary school kids. It was really foolish. That was when Erling was there, I think, was still doing that. And Bob, but it didn't make sense to me.
Dan, and then Michelle.
Thanks so much for putting this together. I think it's a wonderful start to what I'm sure will be a long conversation, but hopefully will lead us toward good policymaking during that conversation. So thanks so much for this. I think just a couple of points that I wanted to make at the outset. And one, actually, I should just add on to what Kathy said. So my, I'm not an expert on this stuff by any stretch of the imagination, but the small school data is really compelling around high school graduation rates and student retention rates. I think that the data is less compelling around actually improving academic performance, but we see that students graduate in much higher numbers. They don't drop out nearly as often. So small schools, particularly at the high school level, I think are an important input to improving retention and graduation rates, even if ultimately we don't see test score improvements out of it. And for that reason, I am a fan of them at the high school level. I think getting kids to graduation is an important milestone that we all should be striving for. Anyway, so four quick points about the study and this information. So to John's point, so part of the, part of the desire here was to be able to single out authorizers for kudos, for jobs well done, and for some pressure when the, when the job that they're doing is not, not being done so well. And I want to go ahead and take a stab at that based on this information. Seems to me that we've got a few authorizers that are doing pretty good jobs with their work. Oakland University stands out, 11% reward schools, no priority schools. Wayne Risa, so no reward schools or focus schools, but 100% with no designation at all. GVSU, 7% reward schools and an economic disadvantaged student proficiency rate that is pretty high and no priority schools. Central Michigan University with 16% reward schools, 2% priority, and evidently that one is closing. So they're doing their job in closing low performers. And Lake Superior State, based on their top to bottom ranking and their proficiency rate with economically disadvantaged students. And that's the kind of kudos that I could never been able to give before at this table. So for those five institutions, I want to tell you, great job, keep it up. Like, whatever you're doing makes great sense, and frankly, other authorizers who aren't doing so well probably should be visiting your shop and learning what you're doing. At the same time, folks who are not doing so well, so we clearly have to start with Detroit Public Schools. 26% of their schools are priority, their charter schools are priority schools, only 7% reward. Northern Michigan University, 20% priority schools, 20% focus schools, and slower than average growth for authorizers. So you would expect to see, I think, where you have lower proficiency rates, higher rates of growth, and we don't, we're not seeing that at Northern, EMU authorized schools. Bay Mills, 5% priority schools, 14% focus, 7% reward. And Eastern Michigan, 11% priority schools, 11% focus, and slower than average growth for authorizer schools. That's hard to do, right? I know folks at DPS, I know folks at EMU, like those people. But this work is too important because our kids are at stake here to kind of allow those personal relationships to get in the way of calling out less than satisfactory or at least average performance as compared to others who are, who are authorizing charter schools. Three other really quick points. One is that based on all of this data, it seems to me, and I've said this before at this table, and I will say it again, I will keep saying it, state policy should encourage the good authorizers that are clearly doing a good job based on the data to expand their portfolios. And state policy should discourage the authorizers that are not doing a good job from expanding their portfolios. And right now, we have no such policy in place. It's absolutely ridiculous that we would allow folks who are not doing as good a job to expand at the same or even faster rates than folks who are doing a good job. It makes no sense. Second, state policy, I think, is rightly placed at the authorizer level because it still allows for innovation on the part of charter schools. Part of the whole purpose of, of these public school academies was to allow for innovation. By placing it at the authorizer level, so a good authorizer can still experiment a little bit. Well, here's a model that we haven't seen before, let's try it, right? So you still allow for the innovation while allowing those, those high-quality authorizers to expand their portfolios. Last two points. There is, so while we, as a state policymaking body, and the legislature frankly is a state policymaking body, and the governor's office need to be on point around getting this kind of front-end quality filter in place for the, in the best interest of our kids, the authorizers themselves have an obligation to take a look at this data. And frankly, if you're not performing at as high a level as you need to perform at, it's time to go visit the shops that are and figure out what they're doing well and take seriously that responsibility that you have to our kids in this state. If you're not getting it done, start getting it done, or stop doing it. Lastly, this data to me is not compelling one way or the other about whether charter schools are a better governing authority or governance type than a traditional public school district, than private schools, than the EAA. And frankly, I find that debate to not be worthwhile at this point, based on the data we have at this table. I get that there are folks who do want to go there. I think the purpose of this request by the board was to try and figure out at the authorizer level, who's doing a good job and who's not? Who's doing a better job and who's doing a worse job? And encourage those folks who are not doing as good a job to go visit the folks who are doing a better job, or to work harder at getting their, their schools to perform better. There'll be time and place, I'm sure, for us to look more at the Credo study and other studies and start learning about, you know, governance types and which ones maybe are most effective. To date, the data in that respect has not been compelling to me. But thank you so much once again for this data. I hope that the authorizers take a look at it. I hope those who are performing well are emboldened by it, and I hope the ones who are performing not so well are ashamed by it, frankly.
Thanks, Dan. Michelle, and then Richard.
Yeah. I think this is wonderful, this report, and I'm, it's making me want even more data. So some of the things that I'm interested in, wondering if it exists, is, you know, so you look at poverty levels, so I take that, this is Title I funded. So they look, is there any way to see if it's somebody who is homeless as opposed to, you know, the degree of poverty? And how, is there, is there some way to compare based on that concentration? Because something who just may get some grant for, you know, a free lunch might be different from somebody who is more severely affected by poverty. So I'd be interested, is that, and also for special needs? Because my concern, and it's also cited in the Credo study, is that, you know, although there may be learning disabled children in charter schools, it's usually not the most severely disabled. And for instance, when I went to the EAA schools, when I took a tour, I asked at every of those, at all of those schools, how many children they had with autism. And I picked autism because it's one that is a high incidence of autism in our population. It's about, I want to say, about 150 boys now, I think, according to the CDC. And so there's a high rate. And when I went to the three schools, and the total population, about 1,800 children, I was told in all three, all three schools combined, there's only one child with autism in all three schools. So that, I give that example because I think although there may be children with some learning disabilities, the most challenging learning disabilities, in my personal experience, it's the traditional public schools who end up having to be the ones to have that financial burden. Oftentimes, they're not fully funded. And so it's, it's those types of things. English language learners, same thing, was cited in the Credo study, as that there needs to be looked at. So I think that affects. So I'm looking at, is there any more data that sort of, that makes clear the level of disability? Or is that just, is that just doesn't exist? Or is it just people with IEP?
So I can speak to both. I heard two questions.
Okay. I talked to her.
The first question is, can we look at degree of poverty?
Right.
Based on state data systems, we can, we can tell whether a student is homeless, but we can't tell what, we don't have anything better than free, reduced lunch status.
But you have free and reduced.
We do have free and reduced. We can look at free and reduced. But, you know, there, there are other things that could be gathered that would be a better measure of socioeconomic status. But that is what we have in state data systems, that is what is collected. So we are limited to that. In terms of students with disabilities...
Joseph, on that point, if I may, I think I hear, I just wanted, don't want to lose this. I think I hear Michelle asking to disaggregate free from reduced.
Yes.
And I don't know what, right now, we add them together. But we could theoretically have a school that has, and they're free and reduced, 99% are reduced.
Right.
And only 1% is free, so that would give some disaggregation of level of poverty. So we, that one we can do, but...
Yes, we can do further disaggregation there, but we are limited to free and reduced.
Right. Let's do that.
So on the, on the students with disabilities, we carry a students with disabilities flag in the data systems. There are also specific disability fields in the SEPI data systems, but they're not audited, so they're not terribly high quality. We would not be able to get a really good sense of the degree of disability for individual students because of the essentially unaudited nature of those fields in the SEPI data systems.
But it looks like we...
If I could also say one other thing?
Sure.
I think it's good to keep in mind that, and although this is helpful to me, what it's measuring is how well students do on a particular test. And so to say that that's the full answer of what schools are better or not, I have, I have personally some concerns with that. I think it, we should just keep in mind that these are, what it tells us is that these kids at this particular point in time in these particular schools did well on a test. And that the picture's much broader. And some of the studies I've seen is that, you know, especially looking at teachers, teachers only affect performance, like say, what was it, the 15 to 20% of it is based on what a teacher actually does in the school. So I think there's so many variables in trying to think about getting this amount of data and being able to start to pull things apart. I think ultimately, what Eileen said, trying to figure out what is actually effective to help, help teachers and improve the schools is what we're looking at. But I, I just think it, there's no simple answers. It's just, yeah, there's just a lot of, a lot of variables here. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Richard, and then Eileen.
I think I hear some of the concerns that Michelle articulated here. As we look at this data, we, and especially as we try to draw policy inferences, I think we need to be careful. First off, there is a certain amount of self-selection that is assumed in parental choice. So you're going to choose a school that's got a program that you're interested in, and if your child has special needs, then you're going to have self-selection that's going to lead you to go to other programs. Secondly, the emphasis on performance. I mean, we're, we're like, we're like the folks who are trying to evaluate fertilizer. You know, the way that you, the way that you can get a good rating for your fertilizer is you only apply it on the good fields. And if we're going to hold authorizers responsible for high performance, then, then without intending to, we are encouraging them only to authorize schools in higher socioeconomic areas where the students are more likely to perform. So I think we need to give credit to those schools and those authorizers. And I've had personal experience with, with CMU. I was privileged to organize a school under their authors, organized Little Redford Academy in Detroit, and then served as president of a board of Woodward Academy in Detroit, taught another one that they authorized in Detroit. And I know that they're very concerned with meeting all of the requirements, being faithful to serving our students. And the usual tool that authorizers use is the performance contract. So in addition to the regulations, all the state laws that apply to public schools, you've got this additional set of requirements from your authorizer, and you have to have a program that's attractive enough so that parents will choose you. So I think we need to acknowledge the unique aspects of charter schools as schools of choice, and especially commend those who are willing to take the risk in poorer areas. And in particular, we don't always recognize the unrealistic expectations we have when we take a, a school district like my hometown, Highland Park, and then we expect a charter school to come in and fix it in a year or two, when in fact, if you're starting from scratch and you're developing a charter school, you generally need two years just to, just to do the study before you apply for authorization, much less try to deal with dysfunctional patterns and expectations and debt and the other problems that such failing school districts have already developed. So we need to, more data is obviously good. I do appreciate the department's work on this one, and we just need to make sure we're preparing apples to apples.
Thank you, Richard. And then it was Eileen and Dan, and Michelle.
Michelle, inadvertently, I ended up in the autism world, too. And MSU did a pivotal study that changed, that allowed Michigan to completely reevaluate its practices in education and passed, it was a key component in passing the autism legislation last year. So at this point, there just aren't enough qualified personnel in that area. And one of the things that happened in the last five years that helped gel all of this and made the study more important was that we've done enough assessment of the methods as to which work and which don't, that, and we know in Michigan how many autism endorsed people and... people and unendorsed teachers who were using autism intervention methods were not teaching the ones that actually work. So I want to draw your attention to, there's a, on page 27, as I bend it over here, am I supposed to be able to hear myself? Does that make it louder, or is that too much reverb?
It sounds good.
It sounds good for a change? Nobody's yelling at me? Okay. And Kathleen's sitting next to me, she's still having to read my lips. Sorry, Kathleen. There's an interesting, on page 27 of the Credo study, which I think only Joseph and I have, is that it? It says, in talking about special education students, it says that the, the traditional public schools have more students and as a, and a higher number of special ed students in their enrollment. But it says in some cases, this is a deliberate and coordinated response with local districts based on a balance of meeting the needs of the students and a consideration of cost-effective strategies for doing so. And that would be the kind of thing we're talking about, which is if you don't have an autism specialist in, if there aren't enough to go around, then are you better off guiding that student to a school in which his needs really can be met? I certainly would agree with that. And then the other thing, too, that's really interesting, anecdotal evidence suggests that TPS and charters may differ in their criteria for designating students as needing special assessment, or special education needs. This topic has been flagged for future study on student enrollment. I personally have been at a CTE center recently where, because they have project-based learning, they found that children who are special ed students are more engaged and need to reduce, don't need the same level of services that they needed in the past. So as we move toward a bigger variety of how to teach kids, we hopefully will find that special ed may not be as important to us in the same way than it may be a different level of service. Thanks.
Dan, then Michelle, then John. Thank you.
I feel badly that I'm talking a second time on this, but I'm not going to feel so badly that I won't talk. And reserve the right for a third and fourth time, if so moved. A couple of quick reactions to some of the stuff, to some of the discussion that we're having. One is around, so I've heard the concern, I've argued for this regulated marketplace, if you will, a quality filter that allows for high-quality authorizers to expand and folks who aren't performing as well not to. Many times, and one of the responses I've heard is the same one that Dr. Zali just gave, which is that we want to be careful not to incentivize work in easier places and disincentivize work in hard places, which I think is a fair concern. Certainly, part of what motivates me in this space is a desire to see parents and families who don't have a lot of high-quality options get high-quality options and choices available for them and their families. That having been said, two, I always have two reactions to that, that argument. I think it's understandable and legitimate, and I don't think I'm at all concerned about it. First, we haven't, so we live in a, in a high accountability environment now, some would argue. I would argue it doesn't really apply to authorizers, but there's certainly a lot of accountability in the public education space, and we haven't seen it disincentivize folks from opening schools in difficult places to date. I'm not so sure that, that anything that we do is going to disincentivize it any more than it already has been. Secondly, it seems to me that any formula can be, can incorporate degree of difficulty, if you will. It's a fairly simple matter to say, if you're working with a group of students that are more economically disadvantaged than others, then there should be some additional compensation in the scoring mechanism for that. It's a simple thing to put in place. We've got plenty of smart people at the department, in the legislature, in the governor's office, at this table, who can think about that and make that happen. We just need to commit morally to the idea of making it happen. The issue here is not math. The issue here is not actually about disincentivizing folks from working with, in difficult environments. The issue here is around our moral obligation to do what's right for kids. That's, that's the fundamental issue. Second, Michelle makes a great point about tests being the only measure of performance here. I do agree that other measures matter a lot. And in Detroit, we're actually working on some measures that, some additional measures. Obviously, you can kind of measure growth and proficiency using testing data. You can also measure things like school culture. You can measure leading indicators like the Five Essentials workout at the University of Chicago, the teacher and student surveys, which suggest that when you score highly on three of the five measures, it's one of, you are 10 times more likely to improve dramatically than schools that don't. And you can measure all sorts of other things as well, and we should. That having been said, the absence of a perfect measure here should not prevent us from using the measures that we have. I mean, we have some measures that, that are pretty clear. And shame on us if we're afraid to use them for the benefit of our kids. Lastly, there's a consistent argument that I think my friend, Dr. Zali, and I have, I will have about the kind of notion of a marketplace in public education. And I think about this really in three, as three different camps. I think about, this is just how I describe it. We've got folks who believe in an unregulated marketplace, will just let parents decide, and over time, bad schools will close because parents will shop with their feet, and so on. We've got those who argue for no marketplace, right? Just go to your neighborhood school. And then we have those that argue for a regulated marketplace. And I would consider myself in that third category. I've got a real problem with the notion of an unregulated marketplace. Feedback loops in education are slow. It takes a while to figure out whether a school is good or bad. We can do better than that. And I would argue that if this were an issue of cars, if there were no moral or ethical obligations that prevailed upon us, if this was just a matter of companies making money, then an unregulated marketplace might make sense. And if safety were not a concern, an unregulated marketplace might make sense. But this is not that market. We're talking about our kids. And our kids deserve our best regulatory thinking applied to that marketplace. I'll stop there.
Michelle, and then John. And then I have a quick one.
I'm going to be a lot shorter. I just wanted to respond to the issue about if you, parents wouldn't want to go choose other places based on what the resources are. You know, as I think everyone knows, I have several children with disabilities, one with autism, my oldest. And when he was first diagnosed, when we were looking for a placement for him, I lived in Detroit, I had, I had concerns about the services I would get. And so I, I called, my husband and I called about 35 charter schools, and all of them, not one of them, all of them refused him. And they, my husband said it's like telling them that he had typhoid or something. And you'd get a very patronizing response, like, oh, honey, we'll find you, you know, this isn't the place, I'm sure you'll find someplace somewhere else. And so, you know, we talk about choices. Well, you know, certain families have no choice, and thank God for the traditional public school that had a sense of commitment to the community, not a sense of being in a marketplace. It had a sense of that this, you know, and then they were required to do it by law. And, and they did a great, I mean, you know, Sammy went to a, a public school that did not have an AI specialist, but they brought in somebody, they had a consultant that worked with the teachers, he had an aide, he was at the Detroit Open School. And, and it was a new experiment for them, but they took him. And so, you know, I'm, I am all about kids, I'm all about making sure they have good education, but I'm about all kids, you know? And so I, I guess that was the only point I wanted to make here.
Thank you. John, please. And then Kathy.
Oh, excuse me. I want to do a quick, because I want to both, we can continue some of this after our next phases of the day, but I also want to say a couple of things in closing this section, but Kathy, did you have a quick thing?
Okay.
All right. Because I do want to make a motion so we can go, hopefully with your support, and meet with our attorneys. I do think we can continue this and should after lunch. I did want to say briefly that I very much want to associate myself and applaud Dan's remarks on both sets. I think we should consider perhaps, and I hope the governor and legislature would also consider the kind of policy exhortation about helping quality authorizers do more and delimiting poor authorizers do less. I do also want to acknowledge, we have many of the charter school folks here who I'm sure are itching to chime in out of, not just respect, but the same reading the riot act to authorizers we need to extend and do now to traditional public schools. If you are not doing as good a job as those on the beating the odds list, you should get your bottoms to see what they're doing. So this is an equal opportunity treatment of encouraging quality and encouraging those who aren't delivering quality. And the incentive can be there, Richard, for rewarding authorizers and traditional public schools who are, who are doing better by the poor kids in disadvantage. I mean, that's built into these measurements, right? So it's, it can be an incentive to do those schools. Because you do a good job, you're going to look good on this kind of reporting. And I also want to acknowledge that several of the authorizers have beat traditional public school management to close down bad, bad operations. We've not succeeded very much at all in saying, sorry, we tried, but we're just going to have to close this school. And I applaud those authorizers who are doing that. So I just want to make that note that this is, we want to treat our charters and our traditional public schools exactly the same, while seeing what differences exist that demand us to think somewhat differently about how we, we work with them. So I would like to make a motion for Mike's comments, that we do our next bid and come back to this discussion.
Is that, is that okay, Kathy, or are you?
Oh, you wanted me to say something?
No, I'm asking, did you, that's up to you and John, but I-
One of the things you talk about, closing this, charter schools closed, they authorize to close the schools, if CMU closes its priority school, it wouldn't have any priority schools. So it can be higher on the list with no priority schools by closing those schools. Then those kids go back to the regular public schools, because those kids are difficult kids to educate. So, you know, that's, it's not as easy as you seem to make it. The charter schools are selective in their students, they don't take the special ed kids because they, as you say, they counsel them, that this, your child wouldn't be happy here. And so the, the more difficult kids to educate are in the public schools, the real public schools. And I think that that's a, that's a problem. I mean, if the, if the authorizers can close the priority school, it's, this is, it's one priority school, where do those kids go? And they go back to the regular public schools.
I want to second John's motion.
Let's come back to this very important discussion, because it's very important that we not give short shrift to any comment, Richard.
In the spirit of no short shrift, I, if I may, just to, one is, I get a fair amount, I don't share this with you, but I get a fair amount of criticism because I don't say a lot at board meetings, and my response to that is, well, I have lots of other opportunities. But I have to admit, I'm sensitive to that from folks in the field who think, you know, you just kind of run the meeting. But here's just two observations. One is, this is very hard for me to do, so I appreciate it when I see it, and I think I've seen it a lot today, which is that we listen to each other, not with just the idea of reaffirming our own position, but with the idea that hadn't thought about that, or whatever it was. And I've seen a lot of that, which I want to thank the board for, and I really think is a tribute to you. This doesn't happen at all kinds of meetings, so that's very much appreciated. And then secondly, it just never occurred to me till just now, and should, but in my own view of this as state superintendent, the accountability penalties are so high now on an individual teacher, to a point that I do believe is not fair yet, until we have better systems to evaluate them. So I was dismayed that the legislature moved quickly, and we're biding our time with that, but it's still, until there's fair measures of growth, we're, we put them out more at risk than anyone, certainly more at risk than a state superintendent or a principal or anyone else. Or as a board member. So having said that, but it never, so my two hangups as state superintendent on accountability have, have been teacher prep institutions for five years now. And, and I think John's point about, and Dan and others who've talked about the knowledge that most of these authorizers who are higher ed really know where they are, and therefore have more quality filters. And what never occurred to me till right now is a lot of them are the same people by definition. So there may even be some merit to trying to invite a dialogue more directly with the board. I know we've had, we've had the legislature, we've got that tentatively on the works for legislature to meet with the board again. And given those two things that I've heard a lot at this table and that I share, which is-
I'm sure I understand, you mean, it's the same institutions that do a good job on teacher preparation quality and on-
No, 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 not necessarily good or bad job, just interesting that in my little hangup of the accountability system, it's that higher ed doesn't have as much accountability in those two areas. And what you're calling for, and I would support, is the idea that where is that among authorizers? But also, it just dovetails with what I want to compliment Western Michigan for, for example, that I inferred earlier, that came together with our team and is really focused on trying to improve their teacher prep. So I'm, I'm just thinking out loud that more for agenda planning down the road, that, not judging whether they're good or bad, just that there's a role for the state board to interact, probably even at the president level, with some dialogue about these two issues that we feel so strongly about that many of them participate, well, almost all of them participate in the teacher prep, I think. And many of them participate in the, in the, I also very much appreciate John's last comment about trying to make sure, because we've struggled with this in-house, that we're going to, we want to do exactly the same thing for traditional schools as for charter schools as we work through this. And I think that's, that makes a lot of sense. And in effect, that's where accountability systems are now, but more, more to come. So, yeah, I think as John says, we'll, we'll make a motion to go into closed session, as was indicated earlier, and then we can pick up this dialogue as you see fit after lunch.
We have to vote on John's motion.
John hasn't made it yet, but-
If we support the motion, the plan would be, we would meet for approximately an hour or less, and then eat our lunch and be back here. We should pick a time, one, one o'clock, 1:15, one o'clock? Let's try to do that, let's be, we need to move, assuming we approve the motion expeditiously to our meeting and then grab a bite. So I move that the state board education meet in closed session under Section 8E of the Open Meetings Act to consult with its attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with SSV State of Michigan at all, Wayne County Court, number 12009231-CD, and a roll call vote is required.
Austin?
Yes.
Pecto?
Yes.
Ramos Montini?
Yes.
Stross?
Yes.
Albridge?
Yes.
Burner?
Yes.
Wiser?
Yes.
Zali?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, thank you. And we can follow Merz's lead on this, and she'll take us to that place, and I see our AGs are with us, so we're happy to have you join us. Thank you for taking the time today. And then the rest of the folks, as you heard John say, we'll be back at, we're shooting for one o'clock.